Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the November meeting of the Trumbull Town Council. Let everybody kindly rise for a moment of silence and pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible)
Michael Buswell.
Here.
Mary Isaac. Michael Colahan. Bill Mecca.
Here.
Ann Sather.
Here.
Jennifer Winchell.
Here.
Veronica Lenzin.
Here.
Jason Marsh. Richard Wolfe.
Here.
Anthony Dorsey.
Here.
Ashley Guardiano.
Here.
Carl Massaro.
Here.
John Foreman.
Here.
Joseph Piffco.
Here.
Thomas Broderick.
Here.
Joy Cologne.
Here.
Stephen Lemoyne.
Here.
Kelly Malazi.
Here.
Nicole Satin.
Here.
Thomas Whitmore.
Here.
And Tony Cintel.
Thank you. Once again, we do have a quorum. Council members have copies of our minutes from the October meeting. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Make the motion.
Second.
Second. Any motions to modify? All right, may we adopt approval of those minutes by unanimous consent?
Objection.
No objections, hearing none. They're approved, thank you. I don't believe anybody signed up for public comment. This is the time for anybody to step forward and speak to any item that's on our agenda. We have one resolution tonight for our business, which is a grant application, and then we have a recognition that I think most of you are here for. So we'll let you do the talking in a little bit on that. So if anybody has anything else to say, now's the time. If not, then close the public hearing. And we will get to that recognition item tonight. We are going to see and hear from the Trumbull United Soccer Club 2012 Titans Boys Team. And to get this recognition going, I'm going to ask Councilman Rich Wolfe to come forward. And he will introduce...
You want me to do it from here or from the podium?
Come on up here. Why don't you go to the podium is probably going to be the easiest. And he'll introduce the team and their coaches. And welcome to all of you.
First time I've seen...
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to first just give a two-minute overview because what they've done has never been done by any soccer team in Connecticut. Trumbull United is a 501(c)(3). It's a town travel program. We're not one of these premier clubs that gets to charge $4,000 or $5,000 per player, that recruits kids, scholarships their top players, and take, build super teams. We are 100% Trumbull residents, and all the players are from our wonderful town of 38,000, 39,000 people. Most of the kids have been together since six, seven, eight years old, and some of them might have even coached when they were four and five at AWASO. It's been a fun, wonderful seven years with them. It's kind of sad because I only have another four with them. But they have always risen to the occasion. This past spring, they qualified for the EDPA Premier League, which is a top league in Connecticut. There was only one other town to qualify for that, and that was Ridgefield, and Ridgefield finished dead last with no wins. We went undefeated. We beat teams from Inter CT, Rush, the Hartford Athletics, EDP team. And what that did is, after winning that, that qualified us for the New York Regional Cup, which is the top teams from Long Island, New Jersey, Connecticut, and Eastern New York, which was represented by Brooklyn in this case, who gets to recruit kids from hundreds of thousands of options. That tournament happened to be on that weekend in June where it was 97, 98 degrees and the heat index was like 104. We won the semifinal game against Long Island 2-0. The following day was the championship. We had several injuries, so we only showed up with one sub. And I told, I don't know if Coach Tyler should, but I told Coach Tyler, I don't know what to expect with one sub against a team that has a full bench. I just don't want any of the kids to die from heat exhaustion. But they, after being down 1-0 at halftime, they came back, they won 2-1. They didn't give up, even with just one sub. So that was spectacular in itself. But then fast forward to this fall, they played in the Connecticut State Cup, which is town against town. We've been to the championship game twice before. They lost both times, very slim losses. And they finally won, they beat Glassbury 1-0. So Stanford was the team closest to, they won two of the big three. This is the first team in Connecticut's history that's won all three, and it's not an easy accomplishment. But they are a special group. I know I'm hard on them a lot, right? Sometimes. But they're a wonderful group. They're not just great players, but they, I never see them yelling at each other. They're always picking each other up. They're just a wonderful group of kids. I'm hopeful that they're grateful to their parents, who spend all this time, money, travel, and effort into, and commitment into everything that we do. They play year-round. In fact, we have our last season game in Cape Cod this weekend. End of the month, we're going to New Jersey for a tournament, and we're going back to the Disney ESPN Tournament in Florida in February. And they don't know it yet, but by winning the state cup, it's qualified us for the region cup. And if we finish first or second there, we go to Kansas City for the national cup, which is in July, and no Trumbull United team has ever been there before, too. So I just want Margaret for the minutes, my king's not here, but Rich Wolfe's saying you're welcome to my king, because they're going to win two FCX and probably a state championship at some point in time. And I'm also grateful for my wife, who's the president of Trumbull United, and Coach Jamie, because he always, I'm very demanding, and he does give me the top coaches in the club to work with. So I'm very grateful to other people in the room as well. So that's all I have to say.
Well, that's a lot.
So, great, great job. And thank, like, you guys keep on doing what you're doing, and I will continue to create opportunities for you until you get to college.
Great, thanks, Rich. Why don't we have all of the players and coaches come right up here for a presentation?
(inaudible)
You guys have taken group pictures before.
I'm going to, I'm going to hold you in that pose while I read this, to see how well-conditioned you are.
Stand up.
Yeah. You can stand up for a minute. So, you know, in recognition, this certificate is presented to the Trumbull United Soccer Club 2012 Titans Boys Team in recognition of your outstanding achievement in winning the Connecticut Premier League A Division, the New York Regional Champions Cup, and the Connecticut Junior Soccer Association Connecticut Cup. This certificate of recognition is signed by First Selectman Vicki Tesoro and myself as council chairman. And today is your day, November 6, 2025. Congratulations. Mrs. Tesoro will give you a commemorative pin as well.
Yes, I will. Congratulations. How old are you guys?
12.
12.
(laughter)
I told you how old I am. We're all telling you. So, is the town Trumbull? I hope you'll keep...
You killed my guy.
Treasure?
Here.
Thank you.
(inaudible)
Eagle showing. I'm going to ask the...
(inaudible)
Because I told you...
Basically? Yeah.
Sorry.
Get in the back.
Everybody smiling?
Yes.
Thank you.
(applause)
(laughter)
I'm going to...
I'm going to...
I've done this, guys.
I do.
Nice one, man.
Thank you so much, man.
My pleasure.
Guys, have fun.
Thank you to the town council.
Thank you to the town council.
Congratulations.
Well done.
Parents, well done.
(laughter)
Kid row.
(applause)
Bye.
(laughter)
I guess...
He was hiding.
I'll get him tomorrow.
Want to stay for the grant application?
(laughter)
Get a medal, please, though?
I mean, how do you follow that?
Do you have a speech prepared?
All right, let's, we'll go to our, our regular new business. We have Resolution TC 30-179. Mr. Lemoyne, would you bring it to the floor, please?
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Resolution TC 30-179, be it resolved that Vicki Tesoro, First Selectman, is hereby authorized, as the individual authorized, to sign the grant application to the Connecticut Secretary of the State, and all subsequent contracts, amendments, reports, and related documents in order to administer and implement the early voting program. Full resolution attached.
Thank you. To present on this resolution is, I believe, the Republican registrar, Tracy Vannick. Welcome aboard.
Thank you. My delay this week.
Press the button.
There we go.
And he's not done yet.
Not quite. One more day. I think it's pretty self-explanatory. You guys had a very similar resolution last year. This is just another application we have to put in this year. Attorney Shopek, I believe, handled the legal part last year. The grant is to cover things that go along with the early voting program, you know, any equipment, hardware, software we may need, paying the extra workers that we need, different postcards and mailers that, you know, pertain to early voting, anything along those lines. The town is in line for just over 20,000 for this year's grant. You all may or may not be aware, obviously, we were 10th or 11th. It was right on the cusp last year for early voting and the number of early votes, and this year we were top five. So it's certainly been a well-received program here in town, but not an inexpensive one to administer. So we just need another approval for the First Selectmen to officially apply for the grant. Happy to answer any real questions, but it's pretty self-explanatory.
I have a couple of short questions. I assume this grant money doesn't cover the whole cost of the...
No, it won't cover the whole cost, but it covers a pretty good portion of it. For all the early voting, like the staffing, it will cover that. As I was saying earlier, because of the extra expense that we've realized we need to incur for this program, we're hoping that this grant will cover any overages in what we had originally budgeted, so we won't have to come back for supplemental. We'll know in January. Obviously, it'll be a new council by then, but there may be some small supplemental we may need. But hopefully, this grant will cover most of that.
Do you know the estimated cost of putting on the election?
I don't off the top of my head. I know when I was running numbers, when we were talking about a special just for the referendum back in June, that cost alone would have been about 20,000. So I'm, I think a full general election is somewhere in the area of 45,000 to 50,000, probably a little bit more with the early voting, extra expenses, just because of the extra personnel we have to have for the full two weeks.
Yeah, it's an expensive proposition.
It is.
Any other questions for Mr. Vannick?
No.
No?
Excellent.
All right. Thank you very much for coming out again tonight.
Thank you.
(inaudible)
Yeah, we, I should say that, yeah, that was the other question. Do you need emergency legislation for this?
(inaudible)
Maybe you already received the money.
(laughter)
I would say it certainly wouldn't hurt. It'd probably be better, safer, sorry, if we could add that on.
Yeah, would you say ask for forgiveness later? Is that the term? Okay, so we have the Resolution TC 30-179. Can we adopt it by unanimous consent? Hearing none, it is adopted. Is there a motion to make this emergency legislation? Thank you.
Second.
Second. Can we adopt that motion by unanimous consent? No objections, hearing none, it's adopted. I think the next thing is adjournment, but before we do that, I have a few remarks as the chairman. I first want to thank the members of the town council for voting me in to serve as your chairman for the last two years. It's a big responsibility, which doesn't really bother me. I enjoy it and I appreciate the trust that's placed in me to run the body and make sure that we do the business of the town as efficiently and as well as possible. I also want to thank all the town departments and their directors, as well as the Board of Education and the Superintendent's Office for their cooperation and, and working with us and putting our agendas together and helping us get their business done as well. I certainly have a great amount of gratitude and offer congratulations to First Selectman Vicki Tesoro. I enjoyed a very fruitful working relationship with her over the last two years and, obviously, for many years before that. And I, and I'm happy that we were able to get a lot done over the last two years, serving the best interests of the town. I also want to thank the voters who place their trust in all of us to do what we think is in their best interest. And I think we all worked very hard to accomplish the things that we did over these last two And I know I probably left somebody or something out, except there's only one person left to thank, and we'd be totally lost, or I should say, I'd be totally lost without our clerk, Margaret Mastroni. And again, I could misspeak, but, you know, Margaret and I go back a long way, and I just appreciate, you know, the working relationship that I've had with her over the years. And she's made my job possible, not just easy, but possible. And there's no amount of thanks I could send her away. Thank you, Margaret. And the last thing I wanted to say was some goodbyes to departing, to council members. I have done this when I was chair in the past, and with a little help from my friends. I also wanted to thank the First Selectmen's staff as well, whom I've worked with. I almost forgot, but thank you, Cindy and Kathy, and our town attorney, Dan, who we work, I worked very closely with on a lot of different things over the last quite number of years, so again, thank you. So I, I have some proclamations to give to the outgoing council folks. And the first one is for Thomas Whitmoyer. And I'll, I'll read his, I won't read them all, because they all read the same except for the name and some of the dates. So whereas Thomas Whitmoyer was elected a member of the town council in 2011 and 2017, I think, and was reappointed in 2025, and whereas Thomas Whitmoyer served his constituency and the town with the highest ethics in regard for the best interests of Trumbull and its citizens, now therefore the Trumbull Town Council does hereby express our community's appreciation to Thomas Whitmoyer, Council Representative of District 5, 7... I knew I would screw this up. ...for the fine example demonstrated as a devoted public servant, years of service, dedication, and innumerable hours, innumerable hours spent working toward the betterment of the town of Trumbull. Signed by myself and Vice Chair Mike Buswell. I will fix the five to a seven and get it to you. (applause) Thank you, Pop. So I, I have similar proclamations for others who are leaving the council. And the next one I'll mention is Veronica Lenzin. She was elected last for this term. We'll definitely miss her. She's a hard-working council member from District 3, and provided a lot of expertise, particularly in the area of education where she comes from. And yes, District 3 is on the proclamation. So thank you, Veronica. (applause) The next proclamation I have is for District 6. And I may pause when I mention districts, because there's been different districts and people have been different members of different districts over the years. This is our Navy veteran, Steve Lemoyne. And Steve did a lot of work for us, both here at the council and on the Veterans Building Committee. And he is now going into retirement. He was first elected in 2019. So Steve, thank you and congratulations. (applause) I have another one for Michael Colahan, who has not joined us this evening. Thank you, Tom. So I have similar proclamations for others who are leaving the council. And the next one I'll mention is Veronica Lenzen. She was elected last for this term. We'll definitely miss her. She's a hard-working council member from District 3 and provided a lot of expertise, particularly in the area of education where she comes from. And yes, District 3 is on the proclamation. So thank you, Veronica. The next proclamation I have is for District 6. And I may pause when I mention districts, because there's been different districts and people have been different members of different districts over the years. This is our Navy veteran, Steve Lemoine. And Steve did a lot of work for us, both here at the council and on the Veterans Building Committee. And he is now going into retirement. He was first elected in 2019. So Steve, thank you, and congratulations. I have another one for Michael Colahan, who has not joined us this evening. But Mike, again, was elected for this term. And he's the quiet type, but his knowledge runs really deep, and we'll miss him on a building committee that he's been serving on, because he knows a lot about construction, finance. And we thank him for his two years of service out of District 1. So thank you, Mike. I have one other to give, but it won't be given tonight, because as most folks know, we have two council members from District 5 who are in a tie to serve next term. And since I don't know who may be with us or who may be departing, I'll hold that at abeyance, but I do want to thank both Joe Piffco, consummate gentleman, a longtime servant in Trumbull, and John Foreman, who was elected last term, again, a very steadfast and good councilperson. We'll have one of them back with us in December, and we'll find out, probably Monday. I never say definitely anything, because you just never know what's going to happen. So anyway, thank you both to Joe and John for your service over the last two years, and for Joe for the many years that you've served since 2013. First selectmen would like to speak.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening, everyone. So first, I just want to turn around and say thank you to Tracy for what, really an unbelievable task that you and the rest of your crew did on Tuesday. They worked, obviously, for many, many hours, very efficiently, I thought. So a big shout out. We have another poll worker, Don Contafio, over there. So it was just a great job, a very hard job, actually, a lot of stressful moments. So I thank them. I also want to thank everybody here through this session. You know, you do the people's work here, and most people in town don't know that most of the resolutions that pass through here pass through unanimously. And that's really important, that we work together like that, because we are working for the people of Trumbull. So I thank you for that. And I thank you for all those that stepped up and ran again. It's not an easy thing to do, as we all know, but it is part of what we do as citizens of this community to help this town. So I just wanted to shout out to all of you for doing that and for the great work that you've done for the community. Thank you very much.
Well, congratulations again to First Selectman on her reelection.
Thank you.
Fifth term. I don't know if that's record-setting. It seems to be in my existence here. But congratulations to all the council members returning. See you in December and January and thereafter. So there's nothing further? A motion to adjourn?
To adjourn.
Okay. Second. We're all in favor of that. Again, thank you, and thank you to Dennis for our operations here for all of our meetings.